Good evening. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chambers who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon. Hold on, I gotta mute this. Will be called upon at appropriate time and each person is allowed three minutes of speaking time. So go ahead and call this meeting order, August 22nd, 2023 at 6:00 PM. I'll be leading the invocation and Ken Henderson will be leading the pledge allegiance, so please Father, we just ask that you be with this council today, God, and we would just turn to you for wisdom. Lord, and I just ask that you be with our city here and our residents and our first responders and our men and women in the military and our staff. And Lord, thank you for letting us weather the storm with no serious damage, God, and, you know, thank you for many blessings. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in citing the clavestor of the country. I've pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Councilman Henderson. So, honey, AB 2449. City clerk, can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson?
Present.
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez Robles?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Hesse?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item A, reordering additional or removal of any items from the agenda? Any requests to remove any items from the agenda?
No additions or deletions.
All right, council, we're good. Presentations none. Consent calendar, the following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversy. They will be acted upon in the city council at any one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member or citizen may request removal of the item from the consent calendar for this discussion. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar?
No, Mayor.
Okay. So do I have a motion and a second for the consent calendar items?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Move by Councilman Allen, a second by Councilman Henderson. City attorney, you have anything to add on the consent calendar?
Not tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Public comment, this is opportunity for members of the public to comment any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained by California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on agenda but may briefly respond to statements made and ask questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to question arise during public comment or may request the matter be agendas at future meetings. So, do we have any public comment?
Oh, we do. We have one written comment and two public comments here. The first written comment is just a brief email from a local business owner, Freddie, I'm gonna chop apart his last name, Al Berry. He stated that in the last two years, he has believed that the city of Grand Terrace does not maintain their friendliness to the local business owners. The staff is not friendly at the counter and are slow to respond to signing in at the counter. The clerk at the counter does not know the answer to questions and it takes too long to get a response when time is of the essence. Permit process is slow and fees are increased. Permit fees have doubled, so he has some concern regarding the increased fees. He had a frustrating experience in shutting down and removal of a business in the Grand Terrace with city staff and city requirements. Appreciates if the council and staff work together to keep existing businesses in the city. He's opening a third business in town and the landlord approval is in place, but staff has not been very helpful. And he just wanted to state about his community outreach over the last 20 years and he would like respect from the community and the same from City Hall.
Okay. Can you forward that to the whole council on that one?
Yes.
And I believe the city manager are aware of that and we discussed this item. All right, is that it for the public comment?
Uh, we have Cindy Bidney.
Cindy Bailey.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I stand before you today to address a pressing concern that affects the very heart of our community, De Berry Street. This once vibrant picturesque street has unfortunately fallen into a state of neglect, marred by litter, overgrowth and obstruction caused by parked vehicles. As proud residents of this city, it is our shared responsibility to preserve the beauty and functionality of our neighborhoods. Today, I urge you to support the initiative to clean up De Berry and restore it to its former glory. First and foremost, we must recognize that De Berry Street was originally intended to be a thoroughfare and it was deemed illegal to park on the north side. However, over time, this regulation has been overlooked and largely ignored, leading to a significant hindrance to the street's overall upkeep. The accumulation of trash and overgrowth has transformed De Berry Street from a symbol of community pride into a reflection of neglect and apathy. One crucial aspect that cannot be understated is the impact on our city's image and reputation. A clean, well-maintained city speaks volumes about our pride and our citizens. Conversely, neglect and disarray on De Berry Street send a disheartening message to residents and visitors alike. Another vital point to consider is the safety of our residents. Overgrown vegetation obstructs sightliness and creates an environment that may foster illegal activities, posing a threat to the well-being of those living nearby. Moreover, parked cars do not allow the street sweeper to clean effectively, not only contribute to an unsightly appearance but also impede proper drainage during rainy seasons, potentially leading to flooding and damage to both public and private property. By cleaning up De Berry Street, we demonstrate a proactive commitment to improving the quality of our lives. A well-maintained street encourages community engagement, outdoor activities and enhances the property values for homeowners in the area. Investing in an upkeep of De Berry Street is therefore an investment in overall prosperity and well-being of our city. In conclusion, cleaning up De Berry Street is not just a matter of aesthetics, it is a symbol of our values, aspirations, commitment to fostering a vibrant and thriving community. By taking action today, we can set an example for other neighborhoods and inspire a citywide movement towards cleaner streets and a brighter future. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. City manager, can you just let us know or email what plans we have for especially the overgrowth and stuff, if there is a safety concern?
We've trimmed back for the sidelines and actually last Thursday, we wrote over 100 tickets on De Berry Street for parking during the street sweeping.
That's a work in progress.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Anybody else?
Bobby Forbes.
Bobby Forbes. Ms. Forbes?
Good evening. I want you all to know, this is my first outing by myself in seven weeks and I'm at your council meeting. I'd like to thank the city for cleaning up, my neighborhood anyway, of the trees that were in the street. I saw your work crew on Tuesday, I think it was, out cleaning up. That was nice. Excuse me, yesterday, I apologize. I have no idea what time it is or day it is at this point. I would like to follow up on what Ms. Bidney had to say. I believe when Cargers built those row homes or patio homes, that it was supposed to be short-term parking only in front of them on the north side of De Berry Street. That's obviously not enforced, ever. It's dangerous driving down that street between the middle school at Mount Vernon and Michigan because of all the cars on both sides of the streets, animals, kids, people with their bags and stuff. I know there's not enough parking in the Highlands Apartments, or excuse me, the apartments that are there, the Heights, but it is not okay. And so I appreciate your citations. I've recently learned that the new code enforcement officer is code enforcement only, not animal control. I've called many times about a few issues as I usually do to City Hall and no callback. I would also like to address something I've seen pop up. I don't know which agenda it's on, but it has to do with the Wallace House on Barton Road and who is going to be occupying it. Last September, staff, I believe, made the change on the CUP to reduce the age of the people that were gonna occupy it. Mr. Henderson was not on council at that time, but the rest were. Mayor Darcy was here at that time. It's very upsetting what I read. I haven't been able to find it since I'm sitting here. You can hear in my voice, I am upset by what I'm reading and this is gonna change our community. I work really hard to keep the values up. I help the city with things that need to be addressed by sending them to City Hall. It's just not fair to the residents of Grand Terrace what you're allowing to be happening here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Anybody else?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close. Public comment, public hearing none, finished business none, new business none, requests for future agenda none. So, city council communications, Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to start off my comments by complimenting city manager and staff, the public work staff in particular, in connection with the cleanup of the storm water that affected most, if not our entire city. The preparation activities outlined by the city manager prior to the storm hitting were well-conceived and executed to a high level, something that we can all be thankful for. Saw the staff out there doing what they do best and it's certainly appreciated by me. I had several of my neighbors stop by just to mention that they were appreciative of the work done by city staff in that regard. So, kudos to city manager and staff that made that happen. My colleague, Mr. Allen, had mentioned earlier before the meeting started about information that regarding the regional housing needs assessment, the housing numbers. And it's kind of interesting because I've been having back and forth discussions with some folks I met at the new mayor, new city council conference in Sacramento a few months back. And the basis of those discussions, which Councilmember Allen noted in his unofficial discussion, was that the regional housing needs assessment numbers are based upon population growth. And those numbers, the population growth for the state of California are significantly different than when those numbers, those projections were first initiated and developed and implemented. The point of this is that the numbers that we have for the city of Grand Terrace and other communities probably throughout the state are not necessarily accurate as it relates to the development and construction of our housing element. So, long and short of it, we've had some discussions. We have a annual conference coming up in September. And there's a, it's too early to call it a working group, but there's some, a few people, about five or six, that want to bring this matter formally to the attention of the league and have the league take appropriate action to ensure that the numbers that we aspire to reach in the regional housing needs assessment will be numbers that reflect what is, in essence, right now, fairly static growth for California. The outmigration has approximated the same level as the inmigration and so those numbers need to be taken into account with respect to the regional housing needs assessment as opposed to numbers that were in place a decade ago. So, if this group shows promise, I will report back to the council and ask for appropriate policy direction as it relates to the discussions that we have held to date. My last comment revolves Blue Mountain Park. I had a couple of my daily walk meetings with constituents, our constituents, and this is anecdotal, of course, and nothing's actually in stone, but I've yet to come across someone who is supportive of that park. And so I mentioned that to my colleagues, to staff, only so that when we do move forward, we do so understanding that the challenges are fairly significant. I think they can be overcome, quite frankly, but right now, it's a blank slate for folks. One of the members of the community that spoke to me lives across Palm on Paradise and believes that that park will have an impact on his dwelling in his neighborhood. Another, I think I mentioned this to the council earlier in another meeting, another many constituent indicated that he felt that park would look like Mount Rubido in the city of Riverside. So, just a word to the wise in that respect. I think that with the right outreach and public education approach, that assuming funds are available when they do come, that we can make that a successful venture of the city. So, that's my hope going forward. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. And I wanna thank Councilmember Henderson for his comments. I mean, he pretty much said a lot of things I was gonna say, so I'll just say that's what I was gonna say. You know, city did a good job, city manager, well done, staff, well done, public works, well done. I'd like to thank, you know, whenever I was going and filling, I went over to the sandbag pile and there wasn't any more sand, but there was some bags there and I was kinda scrunching around in the dirt. And then a resident from Darwin Street drove up and he said, "I've got some mortar sand over my house. Come on over, you can have all you want." And then somebody else drove up and they all wanted some sand. He told them. And so we all just went over to his house and we started filling up sandbags. And I just, residents in Grand Terrace, I just love them, you know, they just wanted to help. They got everybody's back, they got each other's back. And so I'd like to, you know, thank Sal on Darwin Street for his neighborly actions there. And, yeah, that would be interesting about the Rena numbers and how that's gonna all unfold, you know. I can't imagine why anybody would want to continue to promote, you know, increasing the requirements whenever they can't justify it. So, with that said, I'm glad that we did well in the storm and that's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Robles?
Yeah, I just also want to ditto everything that Councilman Henderson said as far as the staff. Everything was very proactive. And I was fortunate because I didn't need a sandbag as I thought I would and I was at an angel game, so I couldn't get here soon enough. But anyways, so, this gang had this special meeting on the Rena numbers and they came out with a solution, exactly what you guys are talking about. And I'll send that all to you in an email. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. I toured the city, you know, right in the middle of the hottest point of the rains. And we did really well with what we have, but we have a problem. There's no doubt about it. We've got a ton of water running east to west on the south end of the city. And however, our forefathers managed to grant approvals for projects that didn't handle a dry lane. You ain't supposed to have a single dry lane everywhere you go, even for a 500-year storm, which is considered a no event. I don't know how they justified it, but they did. And so we're cleaning up the mess. And as the city manager has already experienced in the last year, we've had lots of messes to clean up from the prior administrations. It was bordering on criminal, the way that they handled what they had for life and safety difficulties that should have been planned for. And I really think that it's a shame that we didn't have a better helmsman at that point, whether it was the city council or whether it was the city manager at the time. But we're working hard to get our stuff squared away as much as possible. And hopefully, with the photos and the other evidence that we have, including some early studies that Lewis managed to do for us, we should be able to try to make a little bit of progress in relation to road and infrastructure repairs in that area before we start loading some other impacts on top of it. So, we did well, but it's gonna take some planning and some money to be able to fix what's screwed up in those areas. We're just fortunate that our staff did so well in maintaining what we have and that bags were put where they could be. A lot of places where the water was overrun in the curb and the sidewalk and the front yard. So, that's not what it's supposed to be and it's certainly not supposed to be no dry lanes in any part of the city. We have to think about, you know, first responder access. And if you don't believe that, just listen in the mornings and the afternoons when ambulances start their runs all over the city. You know, we just, if we can't get to them, it's gonna be difficult to do the service that they expect. Went to a BIA-sponsored, in San Bernardino County, chapter actually, water conference that was held over at one of the hotels over there in Ontario, near the convention center. And I distributed a copy of each one of the scheduled activities and a rundown on each one of the speakers. From a macro standpoint, these are the people that are at the top of their game. One of the first speakers was Susan Kennedy from Cadiz Incorporated. And Cadiz has a huge aquifer that I guess nobody else knows about. And they are repurposing a gas line to be able to run water that will connect with the California Water Resources lines. And because this is replaceable water, apparently they're able to do that without sacrificing any service to their people. In the meantime, they're also, there's a little bit of treatment that has to happen in order for some of their domestic use to go through. And so they're actually, they bought the company that was the treatment company that was handling the trace amounts of arsenic that was in the water. And so they so far have managed to provide water where there wasn't water, domestic water service, to some of their homes over there in Cadiz area. And if you're not familiar where Cadiz is, it's over in the Mojave Desert, where you'd expect the last place to be where there's a huge aquifer that's approachable. There were people like Robin Noeth, who was National Corps, also an apartment complex outfit, Kathleen Pieroni from the Inland Empire Utilities Agency, Heather Dyer from the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District, she's the GM, Dr. Mark Ray from the Building Industry Association, who's sub for a couple of people. But by far, the most informative individual, and fortunately was sitting at the same table I was at, got to serve him some tea. He was Dr. Marty Ralph of the Scripps Institute of Oceanography at UC San Diego Center for Western Weather and Water Extremes. Incredible. Knows just about everything there is to know about, about the way the water returns back to the ocean and how much water, how much fresh water we actually have available and some of the opportunities that are out there in order to be able to capture that water, so on. Anyway, it was held between 8:00 and 1:00. And I've never had so much material, so much information packed into my brain at one time. It was terrific. Also had an opportunity to meet for lunch with Mark Cloud, who is our SCE governmental relations representative. And he did tell me that Edison has actually claimed responsibility for the Paradise Fire, which was interesting. He also told me about some of the things that they're in the process of doing to try to inhibit any chances of wildfires. And with the new influx of the electric cars, as well as the amount of demand that they have now, and the problem with the fact that we've got a lot of solar that's feeding onto the grid, they've had to do some enormous adjustments, SCE has, in order to be able to handle that feed. And of course, they're having to upgrade a lot of cabling and different facilities to be able to handle what's gonna happen in relation to the electric vehicles. And so it was an interesting opportunity to sit and listen to cutting-edge information from Edison. And he's open for phone calls, so anytime you wanna talk to him about stuff. He also informed me that at this point, they're gonna have a little bit of difficulty receiving the power that's gonna happen from the burnout station that's coming because they don't have any facilities to receive it. So I thought that was interesting from our standpoint and it should be something that we wanna dig into. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So, yes, you know, thank you, staff, for, you know, sacrificing your weekend and, you know, being here. And, you know, thank God we didn't have any major things. I think the only major thing happened was my roof leaked, my neighbor's roof leaked and my other neighbor's roof had a leak. So, apparently the contractor decided to have all the roof leaks at one time because the homes were built all at the same time. So, anyway, I went to, I was invited to the county, their board meeting and by Chair Supervisor Rao. And before that, I got to sit during the roundtable at, you know, 8:00 this morning and they had a visitor, Mayor Chong from, I'm gonna mess his name, Taiyang City, Taiwan. It's a sister city for San Bernardino. And of course, it's really nice to read about their city. It's like a 10,000 ponds. And I kept thinking about Minnesota and 10,000 lakes. And then it's called a city, a piece of garden city, paradise of gardens. So, but it was really neat. They talked about growing global partnerships and the partnerships and then mutual thing is the infrastructure building that. But one of the biggest problems they have is they don't have any more land to build anything. And we're, San Bernardino County has a lot of land and Ms. Robles probably knows about this with SBCTA. So then they were talking about the economic developer at the county was talking about how the racetrack in Fontana is gonna be down to a half a mile, wanting to get more spectators, you know, instead of waiting the two and a half miles, you know, zooming around. And then with the extra, them condensing it, they're gonna have a lot more land available and I guess a lot of warehouses and infrastructures going in there. So they're pretty much talking about how we're gonna be one big giant hub, how, you know, this county's gonna be, you know, a lot of railroads gonna be coming through, the Needles and Barstow and pretty much, you know, we'll be one big warehouse coming through here and a lot of traffic, truck traffic. So it was just interesting seeing that and then being there during the board meeting. So, that's all I have. City manager, you have any communications?
Yes, thank you. Actually, I'd like to thank the council for, during the storm. You actually had one of the toughest jobs is to step back and let us do our job. And in those events, it's really easy to want to dive in and help manage and get involved and that's very difficult to step back. So thank you for doing your job well in this process. Also, thank you to law enforcement and fire who were there the whole time. We dropped over 20 yards of sand and over 1,000 sandbags and we had our guys hauling sand up until about 4:00. hauling sand up until about four o'clock Saturday, sorry, Sunday afternoon. So it went as fast as we brought it. And actually, to Councilmember Wilson's comment, one of the reasons that we paved the east-west roads first in our paving project is to facilitate that drainage and to help that water run off as quickly as possible. It's not the solution, but it helped mitigate some of that damage. So we are asking for the community's patience and a little forbearance as we go through cleanup. We have trees down, trees down in the park, there's, Richard Rollins Park is closed for the next couple of days. We have some trees that are ready to topple, those are coming down. We're picking up limbs and branches and still have several days of cleanup left. One of the other things, the really smart city managers, they ordered the street sweepers last week to come this week, the rest of us, we ordered them yesterday. So we'll be getting some street sweeping to help clean up the debris that's in the street over the next week as well. We have our crews doing some hand cleanup in the really bad, the really bad areas. We had one storm drain that failed, it's a small failure, and we have crews out there will be digging that out and working on that failure. So all in all, I think it was a very good drill and a great practice for all of us for when something really bad happens, and we're very fortunate that everybody worked together on this. On a separate note, our dumpster out here, people are really engaged in using that and filling it on a daily basis. For those of you that are not here and watching, I ask that if the dumpster's full, please don't overfill it, please don't keep throwing stuff on top. It takes time and effort for us to crunch it all down. If it's over the top, the hauler won't haul it, then we have to hand unload it, and please don't leave stuff around there. There'll be an empty dumpster, we empty it Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, so in a couple of days, there'll be an empty one, come back, dump it in there. So if you can help us with that, we'd really appreciate it. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. So our last thing, we're going to recess to closed session. Closed session's going to, one and two, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to section 54957B for the city manager and city attorney. So if you don't, if you're not here when we come back, have a blessed night and God bless.
You know, my roof leaks too.
All right, we'll go ahead and reconvene open session. We discussed the public employee performance evaluation pursuant to section 54957B1 for the title, city manager and city attorney. The staff was given directions. City attorney, you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Mayor. That covers it.
All right, so we'll go ahead and close it, and we'll go close our council meeting until the next regular council, city council meeting will be held Tuesday, September 12, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with city council procedures. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.